To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have the minutes before you. I'm not sure if you're seeing this. I hear a motion. Do we accept those? I made a motion. Do we accept? Please, me. Do I hear a second?
No second.
Since everyone here is all.
Oh, that's true.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jody's not here.
Yeah. Hey, can I give your report, please?
All right, and the water plant's treated 577,730 gallons. It's October 25th. Our average annual usage is up to 41,266. The filters were back flushed on November 30th and October 7th. The October water report's complete. It's initiated by them. Peerless Midwest will be here this Thursday to do repairs at the water plant. And then we have a bad pressure transducer at the water tower. It's caused a few overflows. I've ordered a part and we'll be making repair tomorrow. We'll deliver today. Waste water been sending data checks to lift stations, the ponds, and the SSO during rain events. The sewer plant's open and we are discharging. Weekly sewer samples are complete. I'm getting material costs together for the interior work at the sewer plant. We have 8,065 in additional funds and we should be able to use those. Steve Brock said we're gonna need to submit quotes from two places for the cost of the material. And then our compliance period is over. We agreed order and awaiting a letter from the state. We didn't have any violations during our compliance period. He sent an email to them and when our wastewater inspector was here, they said it was also coming to an end here in October. So we should get that sometime soon again. Under streets curb appeal 75% complete on the phone company repairs. And I talked with him today and he should be totally done by this Friday. All the equipment vehicles have been serviced with the exception of the backhoe. That's gonna be finished soon. The Chevy 2500 has a bad glow plug circuit on cylinder number seven, but it's gonna be covered under warranty. We'll be taking that in. And then last thing I have, I'd like to get some quotes for insulation at the shelter house. When we installed the water heater over there, we discovered that there's very little insulation and there's none in some areas. It's gonna have to save us in the end. And then under building, we've had three inspections, one electrical inspection, issued two permits. Had one building permit inquiry and the October census report's complete and has been submitted. That's all I have. Let me see any questions.
Thank you. Joe Murray's with us tonight, so.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report about.
Okay. Robin, do you have anything?
No.
Any old business tonight from the floor? Again, we welcome old, uh, we welcome orange baseball. We welcome old business. We welcome orange baseball with us tonight. They discussed earlier in the festival meeting about their successes with this festival. So we're glad to hear from that and again, glad you're here. Do you have anything else to report at this time?
I don't know, are we old business or new business?
Well.
We're old business or? We've got a few things to hand out.
Sure.
Now, is that the time to do that?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, cool. We'll leave off the rest for sure. Well, we've got a little quick presentation to go through. We're talking about Orange Park. Kind of an update on our organization, renovations and improvements that we plan. There's a fair amount that we are wanting to get done, starting maybe as soon as tomorrow. But getting things done before it snow flies, so there's a number of things. I'm joined here with Joe Murray and Adrian Roach. And so Joe Murray is our vice president. Adrian Roach is also on the board as our fields and facility management. And so if we go to the orange update page, just give you a quick little update on, we talked about Blue Earth Festival. And just again to say thank you for the opportunity. We had a great turnout of our volunteers, parked cars in two different lots, ran a breakfast. And it was a tremendous success for us as an organization. I believe we netted right around $7,000 to the organization. So thank you very much. And that was a, that was a real bump. Put a little bit in the bank and now we wanna talk about where we're gonna start to use some of that into putting it back into the community and back into the field. So we hope to be a part of it again next year. And obviously we already talked in the first meeting, but if there are any suggestions for improvements, we're definitely open to those suggestions. Awesome. Just a quick organization outlook. Looks like we'll be between nine to 11 teams next year for the 2017 season. Another thing that's pretty exciting, which is why we need to get moving on getting the fields and the facilities improved and renovated and up to speed. We already have, working with Adam Decker at NYB, so Noblesville Youth Baseball. They have already scheduled four tournaments in June to be held up here at the fields. So there's an extension. Their home base will be in Noblesville and they're also using our fields. And then they're also going to be using the Cicero fields, I believe. And they're gonna be doing some renovations there and helping them. So I'll touch on that a little bit, but Adam Decker, he has a crew there that that's all they do is they focus on their fields and field maintenance. And they've really become kind of a part of our organization, but they've kind of combined with us. And so this is all that they've done and do on a day-to-day basis. And it's great to have them on board and them being excited about utilizing the fields just up the road from Noblesville. We have one that we are planning to put together as an organization called the One Orphan Invitational. That would be a baseball tournament, but the idea is all the proceeds go to benefit One Orphan Foundation, which focuses on orphan care, adoptions, foster care and that sort of thing. So out of all of the tournaments we play in, there'll be tournaments where people are, you know, it's maybe it's a tournament where there is a, you know, it's in memory of somebody or that sort of thing. But normally it's just, most of them that you go to, it's just, it's the summer slam or the big bash bat or something like that. You kind of go and you play and have a good time and get your trophy. We wanted to make it a little bit different to where all of the teams participate and get a chance to really make a difference in the lives of a lot of other children that are less fortunate, that aren't out playing baseball with their dads and their family. They're looking for a forever family. So it's something that we wanna do just a little bit different, so, which is pretty cool. We've been focusing on some major and primary field sponsors for the fields. And so that's a, an exciting thing for us. We wanna select or I guess secure, sorry, that microphone is still just vibrating over here, so. Hang on, let me put this on the whole sideline thing here. There we go. All right. So, and then we've also got our sponsorship packages finalized for signed sponsors and a few other things. And then we'll be rolling those out through the teams. And I'll touch a little bit on the sponsorships as well. So things are moving forward. The main reason we're here tonight is to talk about the field renovations and improvements. We're anticipating, I mean, we're gonna have our biggest cost upfront and we're gonna see how much we can get done. We're anticipating almost $25,000 going into the fields between this fall and in the spring. And these guys have done a great job of helping us collect what our costs are, hard costs, fixed costs. A lot of the things we'll be doing will be volunteer work as far as sweat equity into it. But there are certain materials and things that we will have to purchase. There's a long list of renovations and improvements. A good portion of those, we feel we can get done in the next two to three weeks, which is pretty exciting. So all right, we'll move on to the next page. We've got, we look forward to 2017, kind of be in the inaugural season for Orange Park in Atlanta, Indiana. And so we talked about, you know, well, how do we pay for this? $25,000 is a lot of money and it is a lot of money. And so the primary sponsors, and I actually just got a text from, from a gentleman, Bruce over at Vex, that kind of gave me the approval, although I already had it in here. I'd asked him if I could mention that tonight, but they are committed to being one of our primary main sponsors. So just in our backyard here in Atlanta, which is awesome. So their focus is gonna be, they're going to be the primary field sponsor for, for the larger field. And then we're in conversations through Adrian with Reynolds as well. We're hoping to get some equipment in exchange for sponsorship, a mower, a field groomer and some other things. Adrian knows more about this stuff than me. But things are moving forward with both of those. And once we solidify, we're hoping to get three. We're just not sure if we have the budget to get the small field all into shape yet. But we're hoping to have a major sponsor for each field with field naming rights and that sort of thing. But right now we're focusing on the large field and the middle field for a field sponsorship. So Vex looks like it's a, that's, that's, other than signing, I think we're there. Reynolds, we've got a meeting coming up within the next couple of weeks. Yep. So we're moving forward with that as well. So just, it's always, always fun to see a little activity. So we put together a little Vex Field at Orange Park. The idea is you can kind of get an image up there of having some orange banners hanging from the different posts throughout. We would use like a wind wrap with whatever logo messaging they wanna have on the back of that. That can obviously be seen from out at 19. So that's the, for lack of a better name right now, Vex Field at Orange Park. The next page, you'll see the medium diamond, similar type approach with branding and marking. This would be, this is the Reynolds Field at Orange Park. And so we would use this, which is commonly used on outfield fences, around fences, behind dugouts and that sort of thing. It's kind of a, a wind, there's actually a name for it, but it's a fabric that kind of has little holes in it. It's like a wind shear, but you can put logo and printing on that. The other thing that you'll see out in left field is the green monster out there. So if you've ever seen the Miller Monster at NYB, I'm not sure if you have, but it's a, or if you, in reference to the Boston Red Sox field, red, green monster out there, but with Reynolds, Ian Green and John Deere. We're planning to build an extra fence out there to give a little height as well as to have some advertising out there. So we've actually talked to the same gentleman who built the Miller Monster over in, over in Noblesville. So just to give you a, just a little insight into some imagery so you can get some vision with it. We wanted to point that out. So here's where we get into the, to the meat of things. So the renovations and improvement list, we put together and have this set up by facility and property. And then we have it by large field and then medium field and then small field. And you know, it's, the organization is made up of all volunteers. And we've got some great people involved, not only just from a knowledge standpoint or a work standpoint, but knowledge. So I mentioned Adam Decker before, that they've worked with us. We've sat down with him. We've gone through best practices, what are the best ways to go about this? They've completely, over the number of years, have built up NYB and the fields there. So we've got a lot of good insight. He and his crew have been up here a couple of times. His crew's been doing the mowing for us. And so it's just great having somebody that has been there. Cause we've played baseball, we've coached baseball, we've never managed a facility. So I wanted to mention that so that you guys have a confident level, confidence level in everything that we're doing out there. It's not just shooting from the hip, we're getting the right people involved to make sure that what we're doing is the way to do it. One example of that, and it's kind of a minor one, was we had asked, I had asked Adam about, well, I see Coca-Cola has sponsored your scoreboards and that sort of thing. Can you give me a connection there? He said, you wouldn't wanna do that. He said, the thing is, you'd be better off getting a sponsor and buying the scoreboard as opposed to the commitment you've gotta make in purchasing Coca-Cola products. And I'm like, see, that would've been something I wouldn't have known. You know, I was kind of thinking it was just a sponsorship exchange, but there were other things tied to it that I don't think we were ready to commit to or, you know. So getting some wisdom from the road even on, you know, facilities, management, that sort of thing. Adrian Roach, right here, he probably talked better about his expertise, but agronomy, he was a golf superintendent, golf course superintendent for many years. Works for a company that, he actually sells, Adam Decker and other facilities their treatments and for maintaining grass weeds, grow, feed, fertilizer, all of that kind of stuff. So, and he's, what's impressed me is he can operate every piece of equipment that I've ever, he just knows exactly what to do to get on that equipment. In fact, part of the, part of the sponsorship with Vex is they're going to allow us access to skid steer and a few other things that they have that will help us on the fields where we won't have to rent that. So there's a, a long list of things here. And I think it's probably worthwhile just to touch through them because I, what we hope to do tonight is leave with your blessing. I know that we have an agreement signed and all that stuff, but we still wanna do this in correlation with you to make sure that there's not anything that we're doing that you'd be, that would be a surprise or why are they doing that? I'd rather just go through this and us go, perfect, you guys, you know, go to town. So one other thing that you see in that photo there is, you know, Orange Park banners and signage. So, you know, we're gonna wanna make the place look festive and welcoming and make it look like you want to be there. It's a place to be, it's a destination to go play. So, and then we're gonna have certain signage up around the fields of whether it's, you know, no alcohol, no tobacco and, you know, fields, you know, use, you know, permission only type of things. Try to police without policing it as much as we can. Because we're putting a lot of money into the fields that obviously it's gonna stay there with them. But if we have to keep repairing, fixing, doing things, if somebody is not taking care of them or destroying them in any way, we'll wanna try to do all we can to eliminate that. Replace, repair that batting cage, as you can kind of see from the row, that's kind of straggly and hanging and some things. So we've got some work to do into there. The storage barn out in center field on the middle field, we wanna make that usable and secure because like the equipment that we get from Reynolds, we wanna be able to store that. So Adrian's already talked about what we would do with the doors and I don't know if we get a, we can get a, I know you guys have talked one time about getting a concrete floor in there. That would be a big help. But then, you know, we would, you know, power wash it, paint it, make it look nice, get doors locked, everything on there. So it's a usable renovation. And it's also a great place for sponsorship out there in center field as well. So buildings, painting the buildings, the scoring tower, whatever buildings need, need painting. Grounds care, and that's really Adrian's specialty as well, but mowing and weed eating properly, spray non-selected herbicide. Boy, look at me talk here. What is that? To eliminate weeds around buildings, dugouts, bleachers and parking lots.
Sorry.
That's all right. You're talking tech.
Turf lingo.
Turf lingo. There we go. Lighting is key. We played a couple of games out there end of June. The lighting, on the big field, I know the lighting's better. We played, they were, they were 10-year-old kids, so they were on the middle field. It was a little challenging, so we were gonna look into the lighting, but certainly wanna install bulbs where they're out and repair any bad lighting and install any additional just for state play. We wanna make the ground beautiful, so there's gonna be some landscaping that we would do for appropriate landscaping, accents plans to make it a little more, I don't know, just pleasant. Sound system, there is a sound system out there. We'll do some updating to that sound system as well as the exterior speakers so we can use it for playing the national anthem or doing announcements and that sort of thing. So that's kind of the overview of our facilities, property to-dos. Then we get into the, to the fields where all the action takes place. So one of the things that we've inspected and have gone through analysis out there, we believe that we need to remove, replace and rebuild the dugouts. So we're talking on the big field now. Too much loose give, loosey-goosey. We feel that rather than trying to shore them up, it would be better to rebuild them. And so that was one of the things that we have on our, on our to-do list on the large field. We would use a style dugout that we see at 95%, 99% of the fields that we play at. And also a dugout that's not only functional, but one that we can use to wrap fabric around, to use for advertising sponsor locations, while as kids to be able to hang their bags on it. So with it being a fence around a structure, around the dugouts. And without getting too graphic, one of the things that we've noticed out at the fields is we probably don't need dugouts that provide private locations for people to go in there. Cause as we went out and cleaned out the dugouts and power washed them.
Talking about the middle field.
Yeah. So there were a few things where you could tell there were a couple of people there a few times. And so I think, now we can't do much on the dugouts that are already there, the ones that go to the ground. That's cool. But the other ones, we can, you know, put in place where you can kind of see through them. Maybe it'll hinder a little bit more of that activity out there so that we're not having kids have to clean up latex items when they, when they come up to the field. So anyway, again, we're gonna take an approach that, that we see at, that at, almost all the fields we play at with a, you know, holes, with the fencing and we have a lot of fencing that we have had donated to us, which is in really good shape. Replace, speaking of fencing, replacing any damaged fencing out there. So fencing that's been either it's ripped down or the bottoms are turned up. We wanna replace all of that fencing. Not only is it cosmetic, but it's also safety. So there are places where, you know, you don't want baseballs flying through. I actually had a fence company come out and inspect, again, this on the large field. It was determined that the current structure isn't strong or stable enough to build onto it, to go up higher with more weight as far as if we were to go up with a fence to make that backstop higher and come out over. And so from a safety issue standpoint, the approach would be to use a, which we see at other fields. We see it over at, at West Field, at Grand Park, they use a netting. It's similar to the netting that we see like at the batting caves, that sort of thing. But you can put that up and accomplish what we're trying to accomplish from a safety standpoint. Scoreboard, a new wireless scoreboard. That would allow us to, another sponsor location on the scoreboard. A new pitching mound. So as opposed to building a pitching mound in place, the field needs to adapt to multiple age groups. The big field will adapt to anywhere from kids 11 or 12 and on up, well, probably 12 and on up. But again, they have different pitching mound distances and so we use, they make portable pitching mounds. There's, there's an older one that's out there, but we wanna make an improvement there. New bases and base inserts being put in at the different foot, you'll see that they're listed there. Tarps to protect the home plate and the mound areas because there will be a fair amount of work that goes into the home plate area. Maybe you can tell kind of what we, what the plan is there.
So basically there, we remove the soil and you buy clay bricks to put in. Cause every kid gets there and does this like a pitcher does. You see all the big leaguers do it, so the little kids think they need to do it. So we will basically remove that dirt, put new bricks in to make it stable and come in with field material to bring it back to level. So every time somebody's in there, you're not in a crevice and causing a broken ankle or sliding in. So it's just, it's gonna be more of a safety standpoint for the children.
And so the tarps, that's an area that, around the, around the home base that we've covered out with a tarp after anybody plays just so that we keep that in good shape. Outfield fence signage, again, we've worked already with the, with the Hoosier sign guy there in Cicero. Our sponsorship packages will have advertising signage around the outfield fences. And then dugout signage, utilizing that windshield fabric where we can then print sponsorship on the back of dugouts. Bullpen, so need a place for pitchers to warm up during games. Basically it's a combination of a mound area, home plate, possible fence to protect depending on things. So, so that's, did I miss anything on the big field? Does that seem about right? I mean, field work is the big one, so we'll see that below, cause the field work needs to go on all the, all of the fields as well. The medium field is about the same, except the medium field as far as re, taking out and replacing the dugouts. We're power washing and painting trim, et cetera. I think the roof repair, it's talked about that that may be an insurance thing that's happening, potentially for the, for the roof. Again, replacing damaged fence, backstop netting, scoreboard, pitching mound bases. It's really all of them, all of the same things that is on the large field. And then the, the small field, again, it's dugout, remove and replace, just for, just dirtiness and safety, et cetera. And then there's, the things are the same, it's just right now we're waiting on where we're gonna be from a budget standpoint, on how much we can put in to get that field into the same position as, as the other two fields. So field work is, is the, is one of the biggest things and one of the things that we want to get done this fall. There's been some discussion regarding skinned surface or a turf or grass infield. And the big concern, well, there's two things. There's playability is one thing. The other side of things is there's a huge cost difference for us to, in materials. And I'll probably let Adrian talk about that a little bit. But that's where we're, we're trying to make our funds go as far as we can. And the amount of material that we would have to bring in if we did not put a grass infield makes the cost go up tremendously. So maybe you wanna touch a little bit on that.
So a little bit of background about me. I was a golf course superintendent for 16 years. Went to Penn State, got an agronomy degree. I actually worked in Major League Baseball for a couple of years doing internships. So had a little passion. I was a park director for the city of Prue for the past six years, so kind of was on this side of the table also, so I understand. But what we're trying to accomplish there is, right now, the fields are stained or what they call skinned, so there's no grass in it. A traditional baseball field has a grass infield and then skinned base hines. For us to keep the fields as is and bring new field material in, it was roughly gonna be about $7,000 to $8,000 a fill. And that's to keep them skinned as they are. If that happens, we're probably have enough to do one fill. So what we were looking at is we have to remove some sod to make the big field playable and use that sod to make a grass infield. With that, that will cut our cost down at least half for the infield material to make it playable. So that's kind of where we're at to see what direction, you know, we can go. It's also gonna cut the time to get those fields done in by about half, so.
And it is a safety thing as well, too, for kids to be, that ball coming on grass as opposed to coming on dirt. Uh, travels much faster on dirt than well on the grass. And that's, that's another reason why it's a preference.
With that, you also have to water the all skinned infield's a lot more, um, just because they get hard. Uh, so water does help before, you know, they should be watered down once or twice a day, just to keep them playable and be able to work them. So you, you know, you cover a lot, you know, cost just double pretty much on skin versus turf infield. So.
Yeah, and, and on that, on the bigger field, you know, cause one of the discussions we had, we had Adam Decker come out. Because we're making that field playable for multiple age groups, then the, uh, the grass part of it's gonna be a little bit further in than you would see on a typical field, because we're gonna have a sixty-five foot bases on there as well as ninety foot. And, uh, and Adam says, "Yeah, but I see it all the time." I mean, cause you're not in the only, the only situation. Either you have one big field that you can only play for at ninety feet, or you have a field that you can use for multiple age groups. It still helps us with, with cost, but it helps with playability, it helps with safety, um, and it's just, uh, it, it's the direction that we're proposing, uh, that we go, uh, with the fields to make them playable and, and safe, and save about half the money on the, uh, material that we're gonna be bringing in, which you can maybe talk through some of that too about the, the field mix. What is the?
So the field mix is a, it's a soil based, it's seventy percent sand, twenty percent soil and ten percent peat. And what that does allow for drainage to go through. So what we will do is we rotate till what's there now, add a layer in, rotate till that in, and then compact that area. And then that's where we will build our drainage and the pitch of the field. Then we'll come in with another two to three inches of that mix and roll it in, and then you put a conditioner on it, and that's basically cat litter. And it just soaks up water, then you drag it in with it. Um, basically after we're done, we should be able to take a two or three inch rain event and probably be playing there within an hour. So it's, uh.
Do that to my backyard.
We'll try.
Might need practice, Phil, Toby.
So that's, that's what that is, and like I said, we'll bring the conditioner in, um. The, the info mix called Hoosier Mix, it's made from leopard stone up in Walton. So we do have a, as we all know, trucking is expensive, um, it's either that or we have to get it from Georgia, so there's two places that have it. Um, so, you know, that does add to, once again, back to the cost, where we would need three truck, three, you know, basically to put twenty-one tons on a triaxal, we'd need three to four of them to do a turf infield. And all skinned, but we're gonna need seven to eight of those. And, you know, that's at eighty dollars a ton, but trucking, it adds up, you know? So.
Yeah, one of the, so then the other thing, so, uh, that we talked about bases, uh, a fertilizer and weed control program, again, that's your specialty. Uh, two to three sets of bases, as we talked about, um, reworking the drainage, there's been some discussion that even though there, there was good drainage putting in, we're wanting to make sure that we locate that, and if there's any damage drain tile that we replace that, and just kinda put in a little bit of a new strategy to make sure that the field can drain, uh, drain properly. Uh, edging and remove, removing all weeds, uh, from the infield's, clean up and edge, uh, the feet, the, the little field for warmup that, so at least that, that small field, we're planning to have that available at least for a warmup field. Uh, we hope to be able to get our eight year, eight year old team out there on that small field next year, but again, we're trying to see where we are with, with costs. Um, with, with the sponsorship with Bex is gonna be a huge, a huge thing for us. Um, we've tried to do like a multi-year, now I think it's gonna be multi-year, but just one payment, cause really a lot of our expenses, other than maintenance, is gonna happen upfront, so, um, so things are moving forward there, which is, which is awesome. Um, remove existing batter boxes, install batter box brick, bricks, and that's kinda that, what we're talking that, that, uh, with the field mix. New conditioner, is that the kitty litter?
That's gonna be the kitty litter.
It's kinda like, looks kinda like kitty litter, yeah. And, uh, again, that's, that's not only, not only a drainage type thing, but it's a safety thing, so that when kids are sliding, it, it's much more give, it slide, you don't tear up your legs and all that kinda stuff. Uh, better playable surface, uh, new mower and field machine for the, for the property, so a new mower would be designed to strike, uh, field to be more appealing, pride in the property and community. Field machine would, uh, ensure great playability of the skinned surface and, and safety patrons. You wanna just touch on the equipment that we're looking to get through Reynolds and how that operates?
So what we're looking at is for Reynolds to basically give us a nice zero turn mower, uh, with the field striping kit on it, so we can make the nice lines in it. And then, I don't know if anybody plays golf in here, but the machines they use to rig the sand traps. They also use them on baseball fields, a different attachment on the back. So just, I mean, I don't know if you'll make it on prices or not, but, um, you know, that's about a thirty-five to forty thousand dollar package that we're trying to get. And I think we're pretty close. Um, so with that, you know, taking care of them, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure, you know, that the fields are gonna be in the best shape as possible, so.
Where are you planning on, uh, uh, keeping this equipment?
Well, that's, we were hoping to renovate those, the storage shed out in center field and, um, why not we could, you know, take care of the, I mean, getting a concrete floor in there would be key, and then obviously safety and security of the, of the building, so we can lock them. So that's kind of the, the, the field work. Um, the last section I had there was a number of things that we've talked about before in previous meetings, um, and I just wanted to list those here that were things that, uh, we had discussed of potentially, or of, kind of of Atlanta taking care of, the roof repair, which we talked about, which I think was an insurance thing. Um, I think there's a, uh, fixing the water, uh, and, uh, going into the concession stand building. Um, the, the other piece was, and I don't know this for sure, um, but I think one of the bleachers, or two of the bleachers have the railings around them, and it might be a code thing, um, you know, from a liability or safety thing. If, I think, I've listed it on here that the bleachers need some railing around them, which is kinda like posts and some fence, uh, from a safety standpoint. Um, it was mentioned before that the parking lot, uh, bring in additional stone to level it out, um, possibly a gate, uh, so that would keep people from just driving in there and doing donuts, um, and a perimeter fence, and there was a concrete floor in the storage shed. The last thing I forgot to put on there was, is having keys that would be like a master key for the, for the different doors. So, any questions?
What kinda, uh, projected time span are you looking at for getting all this done?
That's a good question.
As far as the field work, I think with your guys' blessing tonight of what direction we want to go, I mean, I don't have any qualms for if we could December have an old field work done. And that would just be getting volunteers and, you know. So you may see some piles of dirt sitting out there, but they'll be gone, you know, we'll try to have them out on a, come out on Friday and have it done Saturday, you know?
Are you talking about out there taking the dirt out of the outfield of the big field? Are you talking about using like a sod machine to?
Well, I have a sod cutter to cut that back.
You roll the sod back out.
Right now, we're what, sixteen foot short right there, roughly, something like that. So we take that to use to the infield, and then we'd have to cut the middle field out also, back some, so we can basically reuse them what we have there.
What's your base slids you want to put on that small field?
Do what?
What's the base distance on the small field? Do you want to use it for the middle one?
On the middle one would be sixty, sixty-five and seventy, but probably sixty and sixty-five.
Okay. And you gotta cut sod back to get those in?
Yeah, just a little bit, and we went out.
Yeah, you don't need to cut as much on the middle field to get those in, but.
The big field, going back ninety feet.
The big field, the ninety feet almost goes to where it's at now, where it's overgrown, so, I mean, we gotta get.
It was out at one point, and then it grew up over it, and then, so we need to kinda take that out, then there was a little bit more, uh, but, um, I think it was, what was it, an eighty-five foot arc from the?
I mean, your typical field calls for a ninety-five foot arc from the mound, but we figured an eighty-five foot mark, uh, arc would be okay.
Yeah.
And I think it's currently at, I mean.
Seventy.
It's about seventy, between sixty-five and seven, and right around seventy is what it's sitting at right now, so we need to cut out another fifteen feet arc to, we don't wanna cut the ninety-five foot, cause that's gonna cut too much into that outfield.
Yeah.
Cause most of those with a ninety-five foot arc also have a four hundred foot center field, so, you know, we weren't gonna, we don't wanna disproportion it, but we need to have a good amount of space beyond the ninety foot mark to have a proper infield.
Yeah, the, the key would be getting field work done in the fall, because in the spring, with weather, with other things, that you don't wanna be doing the, the heavy lifting there. Spring, we can certainly do a lot more with, with fencing, with power washing, with painting, that sort of thing. Um, but, uh, the field work is the, the most critical thing that we could get done and accomplish this, this fall. Cause I don't wanna, like last year, we, we had all these intentions of, I mean, we played, we practiced there, there were a few games, but once we got things rolling, everybody was in the middle of their season, we were into, uh, June, and it's like, it was tough to, uh, to get things, uh, cranked, so I know what we're trying to, we set our date, we're trying to work backward, or we've worked backwards now, we know what we need to accomplish during this, this period of time.
Well, I'm pretty impressed with a twenty-five thousand dollar renovation project, especially when that old diamond hadn't seen two hundred and fifty dollars in god, I don't know how many years.
Andy, do you have all the drawings from that, the ditches and everything down there? I do, so I'll make sure you got both of these.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I know, what's this, this, twenty years ago, uh, I was kinda concerned when I semi was parked down there, because I know my husband always said it was too much weight for some, some of that, so maybe if you have that, you'll kind of know, so I'll get that to you. I'll give it to Andy, Andy can get it to you.
And the, the semi was just the, the poor body people, that was just the history.
Oh, no, this, this was.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was a festival.
No, it was years ago.
Gosh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's impressive.
Well, we're excited about it. We were excited from day one, and now it's, now that we've got Bex on board, and then combine that with the, uh, the money that we were able to raise in the Seer Festival, um, and then we're hoping that, that will allow us to, to do the things in here. Um, but each team then will be given sponsorship packages and, uh, and each, each family hopefully will be able to find at least one sponsor that will then, we're hoping that will cover our ongoing maintenance throughout the year at very minimum. Uh, and then if there's any additional from that, then we can put some more, uh, effort into, uh, to making the fields, uh, awesome. I know we're, we're wa- we're, we're proud of it, we're gonna be, you're gonna be proud of it too, so, so, uh, we're, uh.
Well, I'm not diss impressed with, with what Orange, uh, uh, is doing for the ball dining. I'm also impressed at you guys, uh, donating funds to orphanages, uh, you know, that, that goes a long way for me. And, uh, any kind of organization that has that kinda values is, is all right in my book. But that, those are the kinda things that makes me proud, that, uh, we as a board, we got the Orange baseball people in here. Uh, I think it's a great thing for the town, for itself, yeah.
Well, for, I appreciate that, thank you for saying that, and that's, uh, when it comes to, when our kids come through the program, we want it to be a little more, take something more with you, and where you can be giving to, to those who are less fortunate are giving to the community. And, uh, not only our teams, but when teams come and play, and they play in their one orphan, uh, invitational tournament, we're gonna make sure that each kid on the other teams gets something to let them know what, by playing in this tournament, what impact they had. And, and, uh, so, cause it just doesn't, just doesn't happen, you know, we don't see it out there, so. So thank you for your time again, and thank you, we're, we're excited. You guys can keep that and, uh, look through that, if you have any other questions, uh, feel free to let us know, I'll give a copy to, um, if, you know, if that's not here tonight. Oh, oh, okay, okay. You guys want people?
I got an email.
Okay, you got an email, sorry. I wasn't, I couldn't remember, I was pouting.
Wanted to leave up here at the town hall for people to look at.
There you go, that'd be an idea.
Did I miss anything? I know I keep yapping the whole time, so.
All right, I guess we're gonna, questions or comments or?
Awesome. All right, then you're gonna, you're gonna see some activity out there here in the next couple of weeks, so, there's no doubt about that.
I know, that's what I was in hopes for, when you guys first came.
Yeah.
So we could see some activity.
Yeah, it's, it's getting real now, it's awesome.
Nachos and a hot dog from the concession stand.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other old business tonight, before? We'll move on to new business. Marvin, you may help me with this a little bit.
Okay, well, you know, we did our, um, internal controls.
Yes.
And we adopted the state board accounts minimum standards, so now we have to do our materiality ordinance and policy, and this, um, Manny helped me with this, and I just wanna say that, remember when I sent out the email and said this is coming down the pike, like ten days ago or whatever? Manny got it right back to me, so we've not had to wait for months and months for this. But, um, most small towns are adopted, what you're, what you're doing, as you're saying, there's a threshold, the, of, um, materiality that if money or assets come up missing, um, it has to, most small towns are doing, or the smaller communities are doing five hundred dollar threshold. So if anything below five hundred dollars will come up missing, that's not okay by any means, but it would be investigated by us and by our local sheriff's department and that. Anything over that has to be reported to the state board accounts. And you can set that threshold at whatever you want, but like I said, most of the smaller communities are setting that at five hundred dollars. So that's what the materiality, um, ordinance is, it's setting that amount, and the policy that's attached is the appendix, um, just is the, the procedures, the, um, the clerk treasurer is responsible for reporting that to the oversight board, and the oversight board is generally the council president, and, um, Manny's got, we, we have to do the oversight board ordinance to appoint that. And Manny's got it, we've got it two ways. We can do council president, council vice president, and the council secretary, which we don't have a vice president or a secretary right now, so we can either appoint them tonight, or we can do council president and two council members. So that's what all three of these are in a nutshell. So however you guys wanna do the, the oversight committee. The oversight committee is then, is what watches me and make sure that I'm making sure that the employees are trained and that, that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
Then the oversight committee and everything, either final, any final decision of what needs to take, transpire, if there is something, is the town council?
Yes.
Oversight committee reports to the town council, the full council, okay. Anyone have a feeling on how you wanna go with this?
Well, it doesn't make a difference either way you go with me, as far as I'm concerned.
Manny suggested, and I mean, he said it really honestly doesn't matter about, but just do two council members, and then come January, he said we, when we do our council appointments, we really should at least appoint a council vice president, so if the president is not here, then the vice can.
Is that any two council members, or is it the same two council members?
It's the same two, so it's the council president and then two of you.
Well, I'm seeking two volunteers then tonight for the oversight committee. Pam, would you be willing?
Yeah, I'd be willing.
Oversight me, right?
Okay. I'll need a motion, man, that, uh, appoint Pam Van Hook and John Benz to be the two members. I'll make that motion. The oversight committee.
I'll make that motion that Pam and John are on the oversight committee.
I'll hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I've had my field committees and boards, and I just got a whole list on my morgue.
Order eleven, twenty sixteen, oh one. Ordinance eleven twenty sixteen oh one, and ordinance of the town council, the town of Atlanta, being authorized and approving the policy on materiality and process. For reporting material, I think is what we just talked about, the procedures and.
Board is number eleven, two oh one six, oh one, hand oh two.
Should we do all three of them?
No, I thought you.
Let's pass one, one. There are two separate ordinance numbers. This one in the appendix is there to get.
Oh, okay.
So let's do the.
All right, we'll just do that one then.
Okay.
I hear a second. I'll make a second. Favor?
Aye.
So then the other one is ordinance eleven twenty sixteen oh two, and ordinance appointing an oversight committee for government. Providing internal control standards of the town of Atlanta, which is what we just did with making.
I hear a motion, we approve that. Make a motion, we approve ordinance eleven dash two, two zero one six dash zero two.
For second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These two documents require signatures, so.
Okay, I'm signing mine.
Something missing as well.
I'm gonna pass this one down.
There we go.
This one has two places. While you're doing that, um, I'll just go ahead and talk about the American legal update. I think I know how it's gonna go anyway. They want to know if we want to update our ordinance books. Um, we usually do it like every two years. We haven't done that for a couple of years, but I'm kind of wondering, we don't, we haven't passed that many ordinances. And if maybe we ought not to let Manny go through our ordinances before we put money in. Because it's like fifteen hundred dollars usually. So just, they called me and wanted to know if we were gonna do it this year.
All right, any other new business from the board tonight? Robert?
I want to land it, the table looks really nice.
Oh, yeah.
It's almost done. We gotta put, we gotta put final coat on it still. Thank you.
That's the whole court, doesn't it?
It's done, just took us a while.
It does look nice. Mr. Page. There it is. All right, any other new business from the board tonight? Sir.
I would just like to discuss about the installation of a rooftop. Had a fifteen foot fence crossing the east, uh, what the thoughts are of how to do that for the safety of my family, so. I know some of us has talked about it, I don't know if you'll maybe kind of go more in detail about it or not. But, um, I'm looking to install this fence in a way that's gonna be approved by you.
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, it's Joshua Johnson.
Joshua Johnson?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joshua. If you would, go ahead and share.
Okay.
Your situation so that we can.
Basically, it's, it's just the fifteen foot fence, I've done talk to the neighbor behind me, uh, that owns the duplexes. About connecting to his fence and the neighbor on the side of me connecting to their fence, which I got the approval from both. Um, the issue that I've had is I've had a certain individual, um, enter my house at six thirty in the morning without my knowledge. Um, I, I have family over, they come over and bother us, we ask them to leave, they keep coming over. Um, I'm just wanting to get at that, probably seek fence up to stop them from trying to get on my property. I know it's not gonna stop a hundred percent, but I think it's gonna slow them down from coming over to my fence. Or to my yard and into my house in the middle of the night or, you know, early in the morning. You know, I've also had, uh, numerous neighbors inform me that we're not home, you know, these kids are on my porch, around my yard. Um, I don't know if anything's been taken, I haven't seen nothing taken, but I don't want that to, to be pursued that, you know, they get opportunities to take anything.
John, would you like to comment on this?
Well, you know, I, I spoke with him a little bit before the meeting and I know the situation. I know who he's referring to. And I think it's a safety issue for the, not only him and the community, but the person, uh, that he's referring to. Has got some issues and, uh, I think that if there's some way we can do that. I know our ordinance states you can't build, uh, anything in the town right of way or ordinances or whatever, but at the same time, I know there is. Um, then it has been without approval or whatever. I mean, most people don't come up to the council and request permission to do so. They just do it and then it's there and it gets, and it gets left there. Um, so I, under these circumstances, if we can make a special exception in order to help him out in some way or another. And, uh, being what he's wanting to do. I was, uh, looking over that, some of the options that I could come up with. And one of the things was putting a gate across there where there's nothing built actually in the town right of way. It'd just be having the fence panels span over the right of way that could be opened from a pole on either side of the right of way. Uh, two fence panels are sixteen foot and if that's about a fifteen foot opening, two panels would do the trick for what he's needing to do. Serve the purpose and still that allow access without having to remove or take down or whatever. Um. I know, you know, that, uh, there's some concern about putting, allowing somebody to build an easement. And I feel that due to the situation, that if, uh, we don't want to go that route, I would recommend that we do it. Or if that resident's wanting to do it and willing to do it, he put it up and dedicate it over to the town after it's up and it'd be the town gate, town property. And there's nothing in our ordinance that says we can't enclose or block off any kind of right of way or anything of the town. That right of way didn't go a whole lot further than the area that they're, it's in question. So I mean, it's really, um. And like I say, I know the situation and I'm not going into the details of the situation he's referring to up here in a public meeting. I know what he's talking about, you know, and, uh, I've got concerns with this issue too. I live in the same neighborhood he does. And I think that that would help him and, uh, other neighbors. I've talked to other neighbors that had issues with the same, you know, same situation, was, uh, sit, you know, the person in question here. And it's, it's a problem and it concerns me. Uh, not only for the resident's safety and concern, but the person that we're referring to. And, you know, I know that people live over there, uh, would like to have privacy and trying to keep someone off your property. Yeah, go right ahead.
I think, uh, I think from, my point of view is when, when we, when we go on the ordinance and we vote to, to, uh, keep this ordinance. It should stay the way it is, but under the circumstances we're given tonight, you know, uh, we're looking at, uh, a young man. Who could go over to a neighbor's yard or home and results could be the guy could get, kid could get shot. Or who knows what his intentions are, you know, he may kill somebody over, I don't know. But I know it's a nuisance, I know the police can't get really involved until, uh, there's actual.